Jenny, would you leave this on the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gary, would you leave us some prayer this evening?
Father, thank you for this day, for this time together. Thank you for your care and provision. We beseech you for your wisdom and guidance and direction in everything that is said and done here today, in Jesus' name.
James, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Locke?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
Counselor Foster and Counselor Segal will be absent tonight. The quorum is declared.
I move to modify the agenda to add P1 for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-402-4E.
Second.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye. We're going to go discussion. This is to go into executive session is what the motion is for, for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-402-4E. Any more discussion? James?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Approval of consent agenda, minutes of the regular meeting of February 6th, and review and approval of accounts payable.
I move we approve the consent agenda and review and approval of accounts payable.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of the consent agenda, the minutes of regular meeting, February 6th, 2020, and review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? James?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have proclamations, communications, and appointments. That Mr. Obeda? You got the floor, my friend.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Bobby. I'm the utility supervisor. I'm here for Rebecca Potter for her one-year service with the city and utilities. She came to us from Boca Grand Water and Sanitation District with a lot of experience as a lead operator there and certifications. She has her Cs in both water and wastewater, and her Ts in distribution and collections. She also has utility and management certification. So to me, that is a big accomplishment. She's the first female to be hired on the utilities here in a long time, as far as I can remember. She holds her own with the rest of the crew. She's usually the first one in the trench when we're doing sewer repair, a water repair. And she also knows how to operate equipment, backhoe, front-end loader, skidster, a little bit of everything. She's learning our system really fast, especially the wastewater side, as far as the testing and all that that we have to do for the state. She's doing a good job. And she has also been asked to be a part of our safety committee, so she's kind of helping out with that, doing a good job there, too. She's a great asset, not only to me and utilities, but to public works. Doing a good job. Thank you, Rebecca, for doing a good job. Should come up, please.
Didn't recognize you without your orange vest on.
I know.
Chief?
Good evening.
Very good, Mr. Mayor, Council.
I get the same opportunity to thank one of our new guys. Michael Avila came to us a year ago. This is one-year anniversary, and he's been amazing. He came from Swatch, had a little bit of jail experience, but not a lot of road experience. But he came on in Montevista, fit right in, does a really good job with patrol. Something's wrong with his face, though. He can't quit smiling. I can't understand that. So that's been really hard to integrate into the grumpy blue that we seem to have sometimes. So it's been really good to walk back there. What's funny is there's actually calls where people get mad at him, like, "What are you smiling about?" He's like, "I'm not. It's just how my face is." So it's been pretty amusing. He's really good. He's on our tactical team. In a year, with only about a year and a half of total experience, that's pretty good. He's a good asset for Corporal Hart and his tactical team. He's been on several operations already. He's been an integral part of taking down some of our issues in Montevista. So we couldn't be more happy, hope to find more like him. He's a credit to the profession and definitely a good employee for me, so I appreciate it. Michael, come on up. Look at him. He's just a good-looking guy. Congratulations. Really appreciate it. You want to run? Okay, all right.
I see where he gets that smile. Looks like he's always up to something.
I know. He's guilty for his actions.
Board and commission appointments for City Council?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would ask tonight that you continue that until all the council members are present, so that we can appoint different council members to those boards. I will have that list, and that list is also in your packet, so you can be looking at that. But I would ask that council move that to the next, continue that until the next meeting.
So we need to move to table that until the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
I move we table the board and commission appointment for City Council to our following meeting if we're present.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to table board and commission appointment for City Council to next meeting, which would be March 3rd. Is there any more discussion? James?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
In order to be included in this portion of the agenda, please file appropriate form with the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. Sky High Discount Request for Brothers Keepers. Who's presenting that? Amy?
Sir.
You don't look like Scott Deacon.
No, he's not here, but I'm here to present this. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you said, they put the application in for the rally that they're going to have in June 12th and 13th, and they are requesting for a discount, 35% for the use of the facility. And I'm just going to, I don't know if you want me to read the reason here that he put in, or if you just want me to pass it on to you guys.
You have to say your timing.
So it says Scott Deacon, and it said the event is the Thunder in the Valley Horsepower Rally, June 12th, 13th, 2020. The event will promote Montevista, and will bring people from all over, and we are a nonprofit. This is for the veteran coalition of the SLB.
It was in the packet, right?
Yeah, it was in the packet.
He's trying to find it.
Yes, it's a all-community organization, so youth will be involved, kids will be involved in that.
And Mayor Becker, their portion of their profits go to veterans for San Luis Valles?
It was a pretty substantial amount that they donated last year.
Last year, we donated $5,000.
I move to approve the Sky High Discount Request for Brothers Keepers.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the request for discount for the Sky High Park Facility for Brothers Keepers, Thunder in the Valley Horsepower Rally. Is there any more discussion? James?
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Need to, I need to sign this thing first, or do you guys?
I think we need a correction on that. Actually, it should be for a nonprofit at 25%, 20%, not 35.
Now, it was asking about the youth-serving organization.
Not 20,000, sorry about that. So the discount would be $492. So actually, the appropriate amount would be $1,968. Sorry I didn't catch that before, but as you guys were looking at it, I was like, it's a great event, nothing like that, but it's not a youth-serving organization, so. Raise up the meaning, none of that, it's just policy.
Yeah, that's fine with me. How do we undo that?
Move to amend the motion. Is that right? Did you vote yet? Yes.
Oh, yeah. Second is voting.
Okay, sorry, I missed that, because I've got to clarify that. So you need a motion to modify, since it was an ordinance, modify the previously approved motion to make the discount 20% rather than 35%. I think that should get it.
I move to amend the previous motion to adjust the discount from 35% to 20% for the Thunder in the Valley Horse-
Thunder in the Valley Brothers Keepers.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the previous motion for the discount to reflect 20% discount for nonprofit, as opposed to the 35% discount for youth-serving organizations. Any more discussion? Now we're good, James?
All right.
Please.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Board of Health update? Marty? Aspen?
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. I'm just here to kind of catch you guys up if you're not up to speed. I don't know if you have seen any of the emails that have been exchanged between Ryan Dunn and I assume the office over here, that the Board of Health is looking, they're discussing changing the configuration of the Board of Health. And in the process of doing that is what they found was that the MOU, which was signed by Art Medina, Chris Trujillo, Laurie Hirsink, the mayors of three towns, along with Doug Davy, that was signed off on in 2009, 2010, that that would be the configuration of the board is not really in compliance with the revised statutes, which all of this was dictated by Senate Bill 08194, which would be 2008, where the state said that it needed to revisit and reauthorize all public health agencies in the state. And so that caused the, Rio Grande County had to make some changes on that, and then they decided to make it a six-member board. In looking at the fact that this MOU isn't really in compliance, that means that if pushed in court, that somebody could probably say that the decisions that were arrived at weren't legal, because it doesn't match the revised statutes. Anyway, the discussion was, well, change the MOU, and they'd like to, they've been talking about the different configuration of the Board of Health anyway, and it became, how many changes are you going to try and put into this? Let's just scrap the MOU, start over, do a new one. And so they sent out notice that on February 6th, they were holding a meeting, or they sent out the notice on February 6th. On February 12th, they were holding a meeting that everybody could come to, and of course, nobody in town in Del Norte heard about it in that short amount of time, in six days. They meet once a month, and I wasn't sure about you guys, but the only people at the meeting other than the commissioners were Bernadette Martinez, town administrator, and I from Del Norte. At that meeting, there was a little discussion about it, and then they went ahead and voted to scrap the MOU and just go to a three-commissioner system for the Board of Health, which is how it's described in the revised statutes, that if you're a county of less than 100,000 people, then you only have to have three commissioners. Of the six counties in the valley, we're the only one that is not using the three-commissioner system. So right now, our Board of Health is the three commissioners, and then they'll figure out what's going to be necessary, and if they're willing to, and I suspect they are, move forward with a new MOU that complies with everything, and that will come around and come to everybody for signature. But I know that town of Del Norte, until they saw Ryan Dunn's email, they were going, what's going on? And so I contacted Forrest, and he hadn't received anything more than that, and I said I'd be glad to come over and explain to you guys what had occurred and where it is. So right now, we're running on a Board of Health, three commissioners meets the letter of the law. And as they figure out what they want to do, and what kind of a new configuration, because it's been suggested, two commissioners, three civilians, four civilians, three commissioners, I think it's going to drag out for a while, while they figure out what they want to do. And that was the reason for then scrap the old one and let's start fresh. And anyway, I just wanted to catch you up and let you know what it is, in case you had heard anything, or anybody been talking to you about it, or whatever, so you just have the information. And the backup for the whole thing was that prior to the MOU and after the request from the state legislature, they did pass a resolution, Rio Grande County, it's very short, there's three wherases, and then there are four answers to it. And the third one is, the Board of County Commissioners of Rio Grande County, having a population of less than 100,000, is authorized and shall serve as the county Board of Health pursuant to CRS 251-508. And so it's all on the up and up, and in fact, all along, they've been the Board of Health, because in the bylaws, in the MOU, it doesn't really say this is a new Board of Health. And so we'll see where it goes, but that way you know where that stands.
Thank you, Marty.
Yes, sir.
Will there be a new MOU? Or is that?
That's my guess, is that once it's all sorted out over there, that probably Ryan Dunn is their attorney, and who is the one that noticed that it doesn't match the bylaws, it doesn't match the revised statutes, that they would strike a new one, if they want to do that. One of the things in the MOU was that it authorized the Board of Health that if they come into your town and do something, to send you part of the bill. And that's why I think they're probably going to be in favor of continuing that method of doing things, is that way the county isn't carrying the whole thing.
City Council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at the same meeting. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And when you get up there, please sign your name on that piece of paper up there, and state your name, please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, citizens of Montevista. My name is Leroy Sanchez. I'm a current owner of Whispering Pines Motel here in Montevista. My wife and I wanted to have owned the Whispering Pines for approximately, close to 16 years now. And I just wanted to bring it up to your guys' attention that I've worked at this motel business for about, like you said, 16 years. I'm kind of to the point where I need to do something with it. I spoke with Mr. Johnson recently about the possibility of maybe the city helping me out with, you know, possibly doing something with the property. We have about 10 acres there. We used to have 24 units that were actually workable. We used to rent a lot to the agricultural people, the lettuce workers, potato workers, what have you. Most recently, in about probably four years, five years ago, that seemed to kind of precipitate, it just kind of went away. So I've been renting mostly 30-day plus to tenants or anybody that is needing housing. But anyway, I'm to the point, my wife and I are to the point where it's just taking its toll on us. It's costing us too much to keep it up, the expenses for the utilities, the upkeep, and not to mention the taxes and insurance and stuff like that. So I'm kind of wanting to see if the city is able to maybe help or assist me in getting something going with the property. I know you're probably, Mr. Johnson mentioned to me, you know, that possibly the city could help, but as you all know, the budget for the city is not up to speed, I guess, as far as being able to just, you know, help buy, let's say, property for proposed businesses or what have you. I think the place would be ideal for maybe an RV parking, because I always kind of thought that that would be a good ideal thing for it, because of the fact that the buildings are getting to the point where they're just too old, and it's just too hard to keep them up. The north side of the complex used to have 14 units, and we closed those up in September because of the fact that, again, they were just deteriorating, and they were becoming too unsafe, I, we felt, and the city also felt. So we closed them. The north, the south side of it is the residence. It's a really nice two-story adobe structure, which my wife and I recently moved in there about three years ago. We really like to hang there, we like to keep it, because it's really a nice place. The units that are existing, there's 10 of them, those possibly could still be utilized, but I feel that maybe those also should probably be eventually vacated and used for something else. And I'm looking, actually seeking someone that would be interested in purchasing the motel, and, you know, maybe promoting it and making it a better place. It's a big area, it's located in a good area, as far as the park and the businesses surrounding the area. And I just came up here to introduce myself, let you all know what my position on that is. I've worked with, I've been self-employed most of my life. I've lived in the San Luis Valley most of my life. I see the, what's happening in Montevista, and I don't see a whole lot going on, to be honest with you. And I really would like to see more businesses being developed, and I just feel that maybe the possibility of my property being utilized in a better way. And that's just all I really want to say, is just that if there's any way, anybody has any suggestions, or a lot of money, that would be helpful to, you know, maybe purchase it, or get somebody, investors, to maybe come in and do something with the property. And that's all, really all I wanted to say. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you. Esther?
My name is Esther Morford. I live at 572 Spur Street. I'm outside the city limits, but Montevista is my town. And I have a couple of questions. My first question is, why the speed limit, all of a sudden was dropped to 30 miles an hour coming west into town, right there at Henderson Road, by Sonic and Mr. Pacheco's business, but yet if you're going east, it's still 35? Do you have an answer, Chief?
No. Forrest, do you have an answer for that?
Sure, but it would be in politics for me to give the actual answer, why that happened that way. So let's call it a miscommunication between the Department of Transportation and the city. The speed limit signs in the city, the speed limit in the city, unless otherwise supposed to be at 30 miles an hour. And we asked COD, if you're on the state highway, and that's state highway, going 60, it's a state highway, they actually set the speed limits per se. And we asked them for a sign that would say that unless otherwise supposed to be 30, and they chose that location of the sign, that's not the location we chose. And in fact, if you're on the west side of town, I think they've corrected that, but they had it where it goes 50 to 40, but they had a 30 in between the 50 and the 40. So that sign was turned sideways, and I think they moved it so it's corrected. So a little bit of a communication issue on where that location is. So why does it not make sense? That's why it doesn't make sense. So, you know, it would have been useful to have that sign where COD rated that street at 30 miles an hour, which is down kind of by the car wash, right? That would make more sense, but we didn't get to say where it's placed. We have given our objections to that. Whether it will be corrected or not, I don't know. You know, but honestly, that's the answer.
In the meantime, I'll try to slow down, so I don't get a ticket coming into town. Another question that I have. I wondered if there's any plan to address the parking situation on Adams Street, when we finally get a third restaurant and the theater all in one block, and there's maybe two or three parking spots marked handicap? And if you have to walk from a parking lot way up here and a parking lot way back here behind the building, it discourages especially handicap people, because, you know, that's a problem to walk so far. I don't know. I'm just asking the question, if there's any, maybe make more spots handicapped or something in that block, but something I'd like for you to consider. If, and I don't know if we'll be, if that parking lot at the bank will be allowed to be used for, in the evenings, for restaurants and theater? Maybe it is now, I don't know. Anyway, just a thought, and something for you to maybe consider in the future. And then I found out that the cranes are going up tomorrow, and I am so excited. I've seen three, and I think it's wonderful. So I'm going to be going up and down the street with my camera, taking pictures, because I think it is, it's a phenomenal idea. And to think we've got 50 of them? Hmm.
And it's awesome to put on one of those.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Mayor, Council. Happy to be here. I'm Margot Alexander. And I will start with the happy, good news. We have a new business in town, and it is phenomenal. Fay Moon Wolf Designs, wonderful owners, wonderful products, good prices, and yay for our community. I am just delighted. If you haven't been there, just check it out. It's just a delightful place. If you need a gift for something, they're the place to go. And like I said, delightful people. So I had to put in a plug for them. And then-
Is that Margot? It's next door to Nino's?
Yes, next door to Nino's. And then my other thing is, and I brought this up maybe six months ago, and I'm going to bring it up again, just for your considerations, Council, we still have an interim city attorney. Why? Why haven't we, whatever you people need to do to get that solidified? I'm just asking. So that was my concern, and thank you for thinking about things, and keep on trucking. Thank you.
Thank you, Margot. And I will answer on that a little bit.
Yes, sir.
The reason Mike is still there is because we've had a lot of other big fish that we've been frying. So that is on the list to do, but we just, he's doing a fine job, so we need to make it official again, but-
Thank you. I just thought I'd put that up.
Thank you, Margot. Licenses, liquor renewal. Transfer of ownership of Quincy's to Gina Bolzenga.
And you'll need to adjourn from our recesses, Council, and go in, perhaps, to the Liquor Authority Board?
I'm sorry?
You'll need to recess as city council and go into the Liquor Authority Board, as Liquor Authority Board?
Okay. Recess, Council, to go into Liquor Authority Board. Thank you. Don't be getting liquored up.
Good evening. So I brought before you this evening, this is a transfer in a liquor license. The owners of Quincy's, they are located in Salida, and from my understanding, they're kind of getting out of the business. And they've sold this Quincy's to Gina Bolzenga, and she has brought forward her application for the transfer of the liquor license. She has been fingerprinted. I did receive her report back. Everything is clear. She has completed all the proper paperwork needed to submit to the State of Colorado Liquor Division for the transfer. There's nothing at this point in time that I'm aware of that is changing with Quincy's, and she can get up and speak to that as well if you'd like for her to. But what we're asking for tonight is for the Council, as the Liquor Authority Board, to approve the liquor license transfer from, it was from Sandy, and I can't remember his name, Rich, to Gina this evening.
If I could just clarify, I'm only leasing. I haven't actually bought it.
If you want to come in.
So if I could just clarify, I'm just leasing the building and the business. I'm not actually purchasing it.
Sorry about that. And I do have the lease agreement in her packet to go to the state.
Nina, is she going to then be the manager or?
I've, I've been here since April operating it, so I will be the owner-operator, so to speak. I live right above, and I'm there every day.
And she has gone through all of the background checks, and I did check with the police department. There's not been any issues at Quincy's. There's no, there's no issues that we foresee with Quincy's.
The only issue for the Council would be the character of the applicant, I guess.
I would love to answer any questions or whatever you would like for me to do on that.
Sounds like you're prepared.
Thank you. I just moved to Monte in April and have actually loved it and embraced it, and I don't really recognize any faces that have been in Quincy's, but I am starting to know my regulars, and so things are going quite well.
You're going to run it pretty much the way it's been?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
How many people do you have employed there?
About ten, maybe twelve in the summer. Some students in Alamosa, and somebody in Del Norte works for me, and kind of all, from all over the valley. They're all amazing people also.
Is your intent generally or later to buy if you can, if you have?
I'm not exactly sure about that yet. I do have a five-year plan. It doesn't include that yet, but if they wa, Rich and Sandy are very smart and own that building, so I'm not even sure if they want to sell it. But I would consider it.
Nothing in your background that you think would affect the transfer of the license?
Not in a negative way. I have a degree in hotel restaurant management, and I try to follow all the rules and train my people and care very much about the industry.
And just so you know, we did get, received back the fingerprint history, and there is absolutely nothing on her history.
So we need a motion.
I move to approve the transfer of ownership of Quincy's liquor license to Gina Bolzenga.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the transfer of ownership of Quincy's liquor license to Gina Bolzenga. Any more discussion?
I don't think it's the only discussion. I know of the questions and answers, in some of the research, is just the financial stability of the backing in order to take over a business like that. If that's, do you want to speak?
I, if I, I'm the one that should answer it. I don't really, a hundred percent understand the question.
Just the, since it is a lease, the concern, at least from my perspective, with the city would simply be the capacity to maintain the business. It's a pretty, a business like that can be very profitable, but can also be very expensive.
Rich and Sandy are probably my biggest supporters, and so if anything, I don't know, happened that I wouldn't know how to handle, I know they will help me. The, my, my lease amount is in line with sales, so the better I do, the better they do. The worse I do, then they don't make as much money. I don't know if I'm answering your question.
No, that's a part of it.
Okay, so they don't want me to fail, and he has three of the other Quincy's leased and has been for quite some time. So we all feel the business model is profitable for everyone. If that answers your question.
And I can tell you that the Quincy's in Salida has been in business for probably twenty-some years. And it's been leased for quite some time.
They run it. They run theirs.
Yeah, and then the one in Ludville.
Buena Vista and Ludville. Ludville's become a new lease, but it has been leasing for a long time, but they have a young, new person leasing it. Buena Vista's been leased for a long time. I worked there as a server before I came here, and, I mean, the business is astounding. It really is. I don't foresee any financial problems.
And it's a good, it's a good name.
It is. They're, they're really good folks, too, that want, want to see everyone do well. Thank you. Can I answer any other questions? Wonderful.
James?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
So we close the Liquor Board and go back into City Council? You had Roy Stone curfew. Will you bring the ordinance, second reading ordinance nine oh one for the sale of the ambulance bays to the Nazarene Thrift Store?
Yes, so, city attorney, Mr. Trujillo, said to go ahead and run with it since I had brought it to you as the first one. So this evening is just the second reading of ordinance nine oh one, the sale of city-owned property, which is the ambulance bays. And it is going to the Nazarene Thrift Store. In that ordinance publication, after you, if you approve tonight in second reading, we'll do a second publication, and then it'll take effect in thirty days.
I move that we approve the second reading of ordinance nine oh one for the sale of the ambulance bays to the Nazarene Thrift Store.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the second reading of the ordinance nine oh one for the sale of ambulance bays to the Nazarene Thrift Store. Is there any more discussion? James?
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you, Nina. Contracts and agreements. Nina, would you like to do that?
So, Mayor and Council, I bring before you this evening the intergovernmental agreement, the IGA, with Rio Grande County Sheriff's Office. Last year, Chief and I worked really hard with the Rio Grande County Sheriff's Office to complete this agreement. Nothing in the agreement has changed from last year. The jail cost is still forty-five dollars a day, and I can tell you that in 2019, we only spent a hundred and ninety dollars for jail costs. So this evening, I just asked that you would approve the IGA with our GSO as it was last year. And also, it's already been taken to the county commissioners, and they have signed off on it.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, yeah. I move to approve the IGA with Rio Grande County Sheriff's, Rio Grande Sheriff's Office as presented.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the IGA with Rio Grande County Sheriff's Office, the same as last year. Is there any more discussion? James?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
MOU-DCI Challenge Grant Agreement?
Evening, Mayor, councilors. It feels very lopsided, did you notice? Everyone's like sitting on the north end. I don't know what that's about, but seems odd. Okay. So in your packet this evening, you have a MOU or a grant agreement with Downtown Colorado Inc. This is the Colorado Community Revitalization Association memorandum of agreement. As you all might recall, this kind of is a culmination of going back to our budget sessions last year, where community development, we budgeted fifteen thousand dollars expressly on the anticipation that we would get accepted into this challenge grant program. And in fact, you know, managed to write a good enough grant application to be accepted to that, which is great. And then earlier this year, I asked the Council's permission to apply for a ten thousand dollar planning grant from DOLA, which is, that, those planning grants are under fifty thousand dollars. As you recall, we received one of those for Sky High for the initial drawings of that as well. So we rewarded that for ten thousand dollars. The cost of this program for twenty thousand dollars gets us a whole bunch of different things in this program, but that's basically the program cost, and we knew that when we applied. So we have a ten thousand dollar grant, and we have ten thousand dollars in our budget to cover this contractual obligation, which basically gets us everything that's outlined in the scope of work, including participation in a conference that they have in April, which kind of helps set out this kind of reinvigoration activity for the downtown area. And that will also involve additional things in June and July of this year in the community, and we'll have a community meeting in March before we go to the springs of this meeting. So this will require a lot of community input and work. We have two council members, actually three, who have agreed to serve on this, so that's pretty exciting. And, you know, a number of citizens as well. So the quest this evening is that you approve this memorandum of agreement with Downtown Colorado Inc., and then we'll move forward with the contract and the payments as described in the agreement.
So we need a motion.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
This, this is a grant, sorry, I don't mean to be up to you, sir, but this is a grant that we're asking for. Do we have matching funds for our grant?
Well, no, we, we already received our grant.
Already received our grant?
So we have a grant from DOLA for ten thousand dollars, and then we budgeted ten thousand dollars. So basically, what they're asking us to do is enter the contract where we commit the grant funds and our funds to this agreement.
Okay. What are we doing with those funds? That's my question. Where is that twenty thousand dollars?
It's going to pay the consultants to do all the things that are described in the agreement. You know, they, it's part of the Colorado Challenge Program, which I kind of, you know, gave you that information. So the Challenge Program includes, well, community selection, which that didn't cost anything, but team building exercises, a challenging studio, which is that meeting in April. And then coming back from that, you also have an opportunity, it's kind of like RPG, RPG, RPD, sorry, where you get in front of some funders with your ideas, and you come back to the community and you start to do some activations. Center did this last year. Part of it includes things like an inventory of available commercial buildings. What's available, what kind of condition they're in, what are the, you know, and working with the owners to see what they're willing to do and see what kind of businesses you can attract. It's also an assessment of the businesses that fit, right? You know, we get these, these emails from Office of Economic Development, International Trade, OEDIT, all the time. New business coming to Colorado, we'll employ a thousand people, they need four thousand gigawatts of power. And we look at those and go, yeah, right? Because they don't really fit in what we have available, even if we wanted to. We're going to get a thousand workers for a startup. So this is designed to look at what we have and enhance that. You know, value-added eggs worked really well in our community in the last couple of years and see what we can do with that. So it's just really kind of a professional assessment of our capabilities, our desires. You know, can we fit in some other things like tourism, like how do we maybe approach that? And we have some businesses that I think, you know, are naturally evolving in that direction, so it'd be kind of interesting to put that, those existing businesses into that framework as well.
I know what information is in the packet, it's on the online, and I know your computer's not up.
I apologize.
That's all right, but all that, the-
I think I, yeah, I think I can.
Because you're on the list, so you're involved in that.
Yeah. No, that's, that's fine. Okay, so I move that we approve the MOU-DCI Challenge Grant Agreement as presented and it's, it's in our packet.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the MOU for Downtown Colorado. Is there any more discussion?
Actually, just a point of clarification, and this was prior to you, Council, and that's where we're hearing about this session, and Forrest mentioned that, where it was fifteen thousand that was approved, and all we need is ten. The extra five thousand is for whatever- The extra five thousand is for whatever, uh, expenses might come up, but the, so the, the one half of the ten thousand that's our responsibility has, has already been approved in the budget, and the other ten is coming through DOLA, just because I know you weren't involved in it, just want to make sure, and the public understand that. Basically, a bill deal.
Any more discussion? James?
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you, Forrest. Financial reports, Jenny?
I don't know if you guys are going to be able to see this if I stand, where do you want me to stand? Right here like this? Okay, good. So, good evening, mayor and counselors. Tonight, I kind of did something a little different than what I normally do for the financial report, since it is kind of the year-end report that I'd be presenting tonight. What I wanted to do is kind of go through what we've done this year in the finance department. We've had a lot of changes this year, I think a lot of good things, um, have come from the finance department. I think we kind of get looked at as the, the number of people that just kind of sit in their office and are the grouchy people because you overspent the money. But, there was a lot of good that came this year. Um, in February, with the help of Chief Roche Crans, we were able to implement the FPPA program, the retirement program for our cops. You know, this has kind of been a learning experience for both them and myself in administering this plan. I think we're starting to get all the kinks out, I think everybody's kind of understanding how it works and, and what will be their benefit when they retire, and, uh, what qualifies and what doesn't qualify as, as contributions for that. In March, we switched from ADP to Management Solutions for our payroll processing. This has been a phenomenal switch for us. Not only did they save us money, but they also catered and tailored their software for us so that it met the requirements of reports that our auditors needed that we didn't have before with ADP. So, our auditors are super happy with the reports that we're able to pull from there. They're a lot more detailed, they're a lot more, um, accurate, so, so that made a huge difference for us and saved a lot of time going through the pre-audit work back earlier in December. They were in, they were out, we had everything they needed, it was easy to tie the numbers back. In April, Diana Smith came on board as our utility billing clerk. She came to the city with a lot of experience in accounts payable, and it, it really showed this year having that type of, of caliber of employee in the department. We were able to do a lot better job on collection fees, um, we were able to keep a better accurate count or more on top of, um, collecting for the utility bills. This year, um, when we get ready to do tax liens, we start working on those and looking at those in October, and then we send them off to the county. Last year, we sent out fifty-five tax liens, and this year, we only sent out twenty-five. So, it, it's a huge savings for our citizens as well as the city, um, you know, because we do get charged for that when they don't pay, pay their bills and we have to send them to the county, it costs us money, it costs them more money. So, you know, Erin, both Erin and Diana, they worked really, really well this year together in order to keep on top of that, keep things moving a lot smoother, and, and not only that, but working with the citizens where, where it was needed on their bills. So, um, that, that was awesome. In May, we started the preparation and the presentation work for the one sales tax, so yay, it passed. Um, we're really happy about that and excited with the changes that that's going to bring for 2020. In June, we made another big switch. We switched from Sunflower to SLV Federal for our main banking needs. This has been another great switch for us, um, you know, not saying anything about Sunflower Bank, but it, it's really nice when you have somebody that you can have as a point of contact and know that they're always going to be there, they're going to help you and they're going to get you what you need, and that's, that's what we've experienced since we switched. We're still in the process of, of closing out Sunflower Bank, it hasn't been one hundred percent closed out yet, just because there's so many moving parts that go with our bank account that trying to track down all the vendors, all the, all the donors, everything, and notifying them that it's going to change is, has taken some time, but we're, we're getting really close with that. In July, we implemented the wage study and, and the wage increase for our employees in an effort to become more competitive with surrounding towns and southern Colorado. And, you know, I just want to point out that even though not all the department heads are here tonight, that portion of that wouldn't have been possible without them monitoring their expenditures and being fiscally minded, because as you all know, there's only so much money that can go around, so we can either spend it one way or the other way, and I think we've done a really good job of allocating resources in a way that serves our community but also takes care of our employees. So, that, that wouldn't be possible without a good management team. In August, we started the budget process, and I don't know if mayor and counselor Johnson remember, the first year I was here, we were way behind the eight ball on the budget, we did get it in on time, but it was, it was cram and jam, but this year, we did a lot better. We, we got it rolling in August, we were set by October, it passed, and we were ready to roll January one and submit it to the state, and I will let you know that the state did accept our budget for 2020 without any problems. So, that was, that was a plus on my part, I was happy about that. It's kind of like a hold my breath thing once I submit to the state, like, oh, okay, kind of lottery machine here going, is it gonna go or is it not gonna go? But anyways. In, in November, like I said, due to Diana and Erin's collaboration with not only the citizens of, of Montevista, but keeping a better track of utility billing, we had a lot less, um, tax liens that went to the county. And we also made a change to our utility bills in the way that we sent them out. We had had a lot of problems with the postcards, um, they would tear in the mail, people wouldn't get them, we'd get them back, and they, they'd look like they had been through the wringer. So, we, we made that switch to send out a full page that, you know, is easy to read, it's clear for our customers, and we've had a lot of positive feedback from that. So, it, it took some time to get the kinks worked out on that, but I think they've done a really good job the last month and this month of, of getting those out and, and getting them in on a timely manner. In December, like I said, our auditors came in, and they were planning on being here a week, and they left in two days, so that's always a plus on my, my part, I can read a little easier, I, I'm very type A, and so I, I start stressing about that stuff, and I don't quit stressing about it until they leave, and, and it just is one of those things that, you know, I try to do a good job, and I think I'm doing a good job, but you just never know until they come in, do what they need to do, and leave, and go, yeah, everything looks good. So, um, they will be here the first week in March to finish out the 2019 audit, and then, like I said, they should be here in April to present that to you guys, so we're about halfway through all of that. The next part of my presentation that I want to kind of talk about is our historical sales tax trends. The city is growing in a positive way. We've, we've seen it, and I don't know if, if you guys feel like it's, it's going quickly or not going quickly, but the change takes time, improvement takes time, and, you know, it's, it's easy to sit there and hear everybody say, oh yeah, it's going this, going that, but this kind of puts, puts numbers in a graphic to it. So, um, back in two thousand and sixteen, if I can get this to work, that dotted line is our trend line for two thousand and sixteen. So, um, we started out between probably about fifty thousand dollars, um, was kind of the average for a month, and it grew over twenty sixteen. And it's, it stayed constant growing. We really haven't had any major declines, you can see, um, from year to year. This one, the purple line is two thousand seventeen, you can see that it started out higher than in twenty sixteen. Twenty eighteen's the same way, it's this turquoise line, and then twenty nineteen, you know, we see that incremental growth. It's not a lot, but when you look at it from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, you'll see that our overall trend line is pretty steep versus the year to year. So, if you take a comparison of those, of those four years, yeah, year by year, it doesn't look great, but when you look back, the, the city's really doing well. Which brings me into my next one, my next slide. So, everybody has heard that the, you know, the economy is, is this looming recession that's going to happen, and we really don't know when it's going to hit, how it's going to take effect, or what is, what impact it's going to have on the city of Montevista. And so, what I did here is, we have, in the business world, as you guys may know, we have what's called the revenue cycle, and it is your expansions, your peaks, your, your troughs, and your recessions that, that your businesses will flow through. And even though we're not a true business, um, as a government, we experience the same highs and lows as a private entity will experience. However, the San Luis Valley is unique. You know, the, the rest of the United States could really be in recession, and we probably aren't going to fill it like everybody else fills it, you know? And, and I always laugh and joke because it's like, well, we live in poverty, so if we're just a little bit more poor today, who cares? It's not going to be that big a deal. So, you know, even, even though that sounds silly, it's kind of good for us because our economy is a little more stable than, than what the rest of the United States is. So, to kind of go more in depth with this, so this, this pink line here that goes up and down, this is, this is the overall US economy and what we've seen in years past. So, we see where the US economy has expanded, and it reached its peak, and then in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, we saw a recession, and this was due to the oil and gas industry and what happened there with them. And then we saw that it came back, and we've been in an expansion mode ever since then. We don't know when that peak's going to hit, we don't know if it's going to hit in twenty twenty-one. Economists are saying that, yeah, it probably is going to hit, but especially with it being a presidential election year, we don't know for sure. Nobody has that great crystal ball, we can only go off of historical data. So, this blue line here, that's our actual revenue that we've had in sales tax. So, you can see that even though the, the US economy was given it this shot, the city of Montevista still experienced growth in their revenue. We really didn't see a major decline, we didn't see a major hit on our economy, yeah, things got maybe a little bit tighter, but it, we didn't have that extreme up and that extreme down. We've, we've kind of managed to keep at a constant growth, it hasn't been fast, it hasn't been a big boom, but sometimes, you know, it's kind of like the tortoise and the hare. If you keep going, in the end, the tortoise is going to win the game versus the hare. So, um, the dotted line, again, just shows our growth line through, through the business cycle. And again, you know, we, we've been able to experience that constant growth regardless of what the economy has done. So, um, to kind of go in depth, as a, as a twenty nineteen year-end review, we did really good in our general fund this year. And, and again, I attribute that to our managers being on top of the budget, being on top of their expenditures. We did experience higher revenues than what we budgeted for, so that, that did help. If you look on your next slide, same thing with our expenditures, we did a really good job of either coming in right on budget or below budget in each one of the departments, except for, um, let's see, the Public Works, they were, they were the closest one, but they still came in under budget. So, again, nobody went over budget on expenditures, and, um, so when I, when I prepared this presentation, I hadn't received all of the revenue reports, um, from the state or the county, so when I did this, our general fund balance was a little over one point two million. I just finished up the financials and sent them off to the auditors, and barring any crazy adjusting entries, which I don't foresee, I think we're going to finish out the year at close to one point four million in our general fund. So, um, with that being said, the one point two million is a forty-seven percent increase in our fund balance from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, so I expect that it'll be right in the same area there. Our goal was to hit the million mark in our general fund and kind of keep that as our baseline, so I, I think we're going to surpass that, I think we're going to be right where we need to be. Our unrestricted cash balance is up ninety-one percent from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, we've got a little over a million dollars in the general fund for cash, and our revenues exceeded what we had budgeted by six percent, and our expenditures came in nine percent below what we budgeted for in the general fund. So, moving on to our water fund, again, our revenues came in higher than what we budgeted for in, in the, in the water fund, so, um, the rest of it was the same. Our biggest, again, our biggest revenue generating source in the water fund is our services. And then, in our expenditures, we came in under budget, big time. And Rob's not here tonight, but he did an amazing job. He had a lot of capital expenditures and a lot of infrastructure improvements budgeted in two, two thousand nineteen in both the water and sewer fund. He did a really good job of keeping those under budget. So, both the water fund and the sewer fund, even though it wasn't significant, both funds, we saw an increase in the fund balance, which, which is phenomenal, given everything that he got done last year. So, um, on this one, the ending fund balance in the water fund is a little over one point seven million, and the unrestricted cash balance in there is eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, which is an eighteen percent decrease from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, but again, all of those capital expenditures, all of those infrastructure improvements were paid for with cash from the city, there wasn't grants, there wasn't anything like that to help us, we, we did it all. So, you know, I think that, again, is a testament to our stability and our, our fiscally, being fiscally sound within the city and, and making those improvements. Actual revenues in the water fund surpassed what we budgeted by sixteen percent, and our expenditures came in sixteen percent below what we budgeted. So, again, we did a good job of, of keeping our revenues up and our expenditures down, so. Sewer fund is kind of the same picture. Our services came in higher than what we budgeted for, so that's always a good thing when, you know, and that was something that we did when we did our budget last year, is we wanted to take a conservative approach, because that helps us be fiscally sound. You know, if you, we could blow the, we could blow the revenues out of proportion in order to up everybody's budget and expenditures, but as you guys know, that sets you up for disaster. You can't spend more than you make and expect to come out okay. So, we tend, we tend to take a conservative role on the budgets, and I think over the last two years since I've been here, that's, that's, we've seen huge successes with that, and we've been able to do some really great things because of that. Same thing for the expenditures, again, like I said, um, we came in, Rob did a good job of coming in way under what we budgeted. He really went out and shopped the market for the equipment that he was looking for, he worked with the people as far as, um, you know, the buildings and the building improvements, you know, he had the great project with, um, the school of working with them to help them get the building trades, real-world experience, but get our lab remodeled, I know there was a few hiccups there, but again, those are things that put us with the community and bolster us with the community as well as, you know, saving us fiscally and, and being a part of those lives. So, in the sewer fund, um, in the sewer fund, the ending fund balance was four point three million, which is four percent increase from two thousand and eighteen. So, um, you know, we kind of wanted to keep the four million mark as, as our baseline for the sewer fund, and, and we, we definitely hit that. Our cash balance, again, in the sewer fund decreased by twelve percent, but again, all of those infrastructure, all those capital improvements, all the equipment and everything was purchased with our own cash. We, again, didn't have grants to help us out with that kind of stuff. Actual revenues exceeded our budgeted revenues by twenty-four percent, and our expenditures came in below what we budgeted by thirty-three percent, so. And last but not least, um, our twenty twenty goals in the finance department. So, this year, um, with the new wage study, we also did a new review and a new way of how we manage our departments, and it's geared more towards educating our employees, giving them the skills and the training that they need to be successful and be an asset to the city. So, with that being said, um, this year, the finance department's main goal is going to be to improve our customer service skills, as well as improve our billing and our accounts payable systems within the city. So, with that being said, with Diana being our utility billing clerk, she's going to be attending some classes that are going to help her, um, with, you know, dealing with those difficult people, managing multiple projects and, and, and time management, because she does have a lot on her plate, and, and we all experience that where we have a lot on our plate, we sometimes forget that, you know, we still have a job to do and our customers are, are first. So, again, our, like I said, our goal this year in, um, the finance department is to improve our customer service skills and improve those relationships that we have with our citizens of the city. The other thing that we're looking at in the, the utilities is we're thinking about possibly switching our billing. switching our billing software. Again, it just boils down to how much is it going to cost? What's it going to take? Is it going to align with the rate studies that we're going to be doing in the water and sewer funds? So, a couple of things dependent on there. And again, Erin is our receptionist, and she's, I'm really proud of her this year. She has decided that she wants to go back to school and get her business degree. So, I think that with what she's doing right now and doing her business degree are really going to be a huge asset, not only for her, but for the city, because it's going to improve her business skills, her communication skills, and her customer service skills. And she's also going to be attending some trainings that will help her to deal with those difficult people and her communication, because she is the main point of the city. You know, when you call in, 90% of the time, she's going to be the one that answers the phone, and she has a unique position. She's one of the few people in the city that has to know something about every single department, because she's got to know where to send that person or that customer to get them to the right people. So, she does a phenomenal job. I could not do what I do without these two ladies. They work hard. They work well together, and like I said, I'm really proud of them. As far as myself goes this year, a couple of the goals that I have are implementing a financial policy book. When I got here, I didn't know what that was for a government. I didn't know that that was something that you should have in place, and it's something that, as far as I can tell, the city's never had. And it's really important. What this policy book does is it sets forth our guidelines for what we think our fund balances should be, what our investment policy is going to be, what our capital improvement plan and capital project plans are for five years. It also includes things like debt service, and it includes, gosh, I'm drawing a blank. Help me out here, Forrest. What was the other part of it?
Expendee policies, and even reaches into procurement. There really looks at all of your financial operations and dealing the city has great guidance. We have pieces of that, like there's this policy here, but they're not joined into a cohesive thing like, you know, an investment policy, which is really important, like how are you going to invest? And as the council notes, we've changed our policy quite a bit over the last year, which has yielded a lot more interest on the capital that we have, so that's more responsive to the citizens.
Thank you. So, that, once that's compiled, that will be something that will be brought before you guys to basically adopt. And that, what that does is it puts the meat to the bones. So, you know, we are held accountable to those financial policies. Something else that you guys are going to see rolling out here in the next couple of months is in a line with the one cent sales tax. So, as you guys may recall, part of that sales tax being passed was that there would be a citizens' input oversight committee. That would be the voices of the city of how this money is going to be spent within the three departments that it's to be allocated for. So, when I attended CGFOA back in November, I learned about a citizens' academy, and our police department has done that within the police department. But what we want to do is we want to take this as citywide. We want this academy to include kids connection. We want it to include the water and sewer, the public works. Even though the one cent tax doesn't affect all those departments, we feel that it's important that our citizens know exactly what it is that the city does, and who needs what, and what's involved in each one of these departments. Because I don't think that anybody can make a good, sound decision if you don't have the entire picture. And, you know, we work together as a team, and even though that that sales tax was for three departments, we want everybody to know what the city does as a whole, and how each department works together, and what it takes to do that. So, I felt like putting together this academy would be a great way to get that involved, get people here, teach them about what we do, teach them about what Mike does, teach them about what Forrest does, what Nita does, what Rob does. So, each department head will have a night where, you know, we might combine two or three departments together, but they will be responsible for teaching our citizens what their department entails. So, I'm really looking forward to that. I think it's going to be something fun, exciting, and new to bring to the city. Forrest already talked about the DCI Challenge Grant Program. I'm going to be involved with that and helping with that, so I'm not going to talk anymore about that. And then another goal that I have for the finance department this year, and it's something that we'll look at mid-year, is I really want, we have a couple of small debt service loans that I would really like to look into, seeing if we can pay those off, because we pay a lot of interest on these. So, I feel like if we can pay that off and save the interest in money and put it in an investment, that's smarter than giving the bank money. We're going to let the bank give us money. So, that is all I have for you guys tonight. Do you have any questions?
Do you have a comment?
Yes.
This kind of thing, well, I won't use the word terrifies, but you're not terribly public at the core. You're terribly comfortable. That was the most succinct and straightforward presentation I've heard of all of this financial stuff. The only other thing would be, we've done all this without any grants. My only suggestion would be to find somebody to put on the grant writing desk, and how much better we could do, because that money is out there, and I know something about that business. They are under the gun to disperse those funds.
I totally, wholeheartedly agree with you. I think, you know, I think that we should always put our hat in the, put our names in the hat for grant money. The problem of it is, is you have an entire nation competing for those same grants, and it's really hard to count on that money being there. You know, it's, you've got to be able to support yourselves, and the rest is the cherry on top.
Yeah, that's absolutely right, because it's certainly, some of that, whatever comes through.
Yeah, definitely. I agree. I think, you know, just like this DCI thing, I think it's a great opportunity for us. It never hurts for us to put our name in the hat, but like I said, we still have to be able to roll with what we have.
Sure. No, good job. Thanks.
Anything else?
Very well presented.
Thank you.
And thank you to all the department heads, PD, everybody for coming in low budget. That's really awesome.
All right.
Thank you, Jenny.
Yep.
Forrest, would you like to give us a report?
How the heck do you follow that? I don't have a PowerPoint or anything cool like that, but my year-end report's at the next meeting, so I'm going to have to see if I can.
Step it up.
Step it up. Maybe we'll have some animation and...
I totally wanted to play AC/DC Money Talks, but Forrest said I couldn't.
Well, I thought it would have been fun, but, okay. But playing off that, standing on our own, our community is doing this really awesome Sky High project. And, you know, the city has a part in that, obviously. And part of what we're doing is we process the Enterprise Zone donations. Actually, I process those. And then they go down to Alamosa, where they get approved, and so the donors, they get a Colorado tax credit certificate. The cool thing is, when I wrote this report, we were 134, 765. We're at, as of today, I made a deposit, and we're over $154,000. So, since the 17th, we've upped that quite a bit. So, this is actually really cool. I think that, you know, we've made some nice progress for the donors, and they keep coming in. We've had large donors, small donors, that the employees donate. You know, it has to be $100 or more for the tax credits, but at the same time, through the Montevista Community Fund, there's a lot of smaller donations that they don't need or need or want the tax credits. So, they're doing $50, and, you know, there's jars out there, and it's really a community effort of people making donations. They have a new donor page on the Friends of Sky High, their website, and they also have it on Facebook, and it's like this totally easy, like you press a link, you can make a donation. And, you know, they really are counting on the smaller donations as well. And the committee that's doing the fundraising is out there, meeting with grant agencies and things like that, and they're doing a phenomenal job. And I really think we're going to get there. So, it's exciting to be a part of that. Like I said, it's kind of an interesting thing. The only struggle we're having is that we didn't really put out the information. If you need a tax credit, we have to get your EIN or your business tax ID number, or it's hard to get you a tax credit certificate. And I've been struggling with that, but I just sent some donors letters today and said, hey, I've tried calling you. Please let us know that if you want the credit. This year, we did a new employee evaluation process that we kind of instituted that's a little different than the one we've used in the past. It's kind of year one of a new way of creating proactive goals that are interactive with our employees. Part of it's called like SMART goals, so they're actual, the employee is tasked with a percentage of their year of reaching actual goals, and they have to be specific, like attend this class with this provider by this date. Okay? Which meant that the supervisor had to figure that out, what class they wanted them to go to. But I think the fun part of that, too, if you like this kind of stuff, was that then the employees had a chance to talk to their supervisor and say, yeah, this is great, but I also really think I need to do this. Can we figure that out? I actually found that to be very valuable as well. So, kind of a new system. I think it went pretty well. And then I kind of, you know, we do need some boards and commission members, and we'll deal with that next meeting. You guys were very generous as council members. I would have assigned them to the members that weren't here tonight, but you guys were really good, and Nita was very fair about that. So, that's great. I think one of the committees that's out there, we used to call it jokingly the Breakfast Club, but we have a breakfast meeting with the superintendent of schools and now the president of the school board once a month. And, you know, the chief's done a really good job of creating some really positive interaction between police department and the schools, and that's like going super well. Our new superintendent is very engaged in both that efforts and other efforts we can have between the city and the schools. So, I think that's really a big change that's evolved over the past few years, and we've made some huge strides. You know, some of that, thanks to Chief Rosecrans and, you know, his officers. I'm sure some of you know that Officer Pino has been kind of working the, an SRO type thing, and has really good engagement with the students, and so that's, I think, great for our community. So, anyway, I need a council member to volunteer for that. It's a hard thing to do because it's a Thursday morning breakfast meeting, but you get a free breakfast and some good conversation. So, when you're thinking about, this is like a sales pitch, when you're thinking about boards and committees, next meeting, think about that one. But I think it's really important, you know, a lot of these boards and commissions are important. But I think that the relationship with our school and our future potential leaders in our community, people that are growing up here, and having those kids, you know, get engaged with government. You know, we get the kids that come because they're in a government class, and they have to get their stuff signed, but hopefully some of that sticks with them. So, I think that's a pretty important thing. Thank you all for attending that meeting with Kevin Bommer, that work session. Our next work session is next Tuesday, 25th, and that will be with the golf course board to discuss renewal of their lease for 2020. Appreciate the council members submitting additional questions for the golf course board, the golf club board. And so, that should be an interesting work session next Tuesday. Six o'clock here. Let's see. And other than that, it's just been, you know, February's calmed down a little bit. January was kind of just a crazy month in the city and a lot of stuff going on, and things have calmed down. My mom used to say, calm down to a dull roar, so it's good, you know? But I think things are very positive, and I appreciate our finance director's report this evening. As you can see, we had a pretty good year last year financially. We did well. There's some things we can do better, and we're striving to do that, but making some pretty positive impacts, and I think you can feel the citizens are making really good positive impacts on our community. As much applause to them as our staff doing a good job is that the people are doing a good job. And we have a new business, which is really cool. I enjoyed that ribbon cutting that I went to. Place was packed, and it was really cool, and it's a neat store. So, enjoyed that, and, you know, there's a lot more things coming on the horizon. So, I think we're in a really good place, and if anybody's a citizen that's interested in that, being involved, that DCI Challenge thing, they can give me a shout, and I can talk to them about it and see if they want to do it. So, that's all I have this evening, unless you have any questions.
Actually, I will say that that was a year ago, exactly what Jenny was talking about was one of your goals for the city, and obviously Mayor mentioned the departments working with that, but it's just overall to the departments and to you, to the people that have been doing that, just congratulations. Good job.
Thanks. We're getting there. We're getting there. I'll bring better graphics next meeting, though.
We just got to remember when those people are throwing the stones at us, they're stepping stones, not stumbling blocks anymore. They're stepping stones.
Oh, nice. Give me a T-shirt. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Forrest. Mike, would you like to give your report, sir?
Mayor, council, after Jenny's report, I was going to ask you to table mine, so I don't look so bad, but I don't know. It was good to go on vacation, got back and kind of hit the deck running here. We, I was glad that Forrest was able to get our 901 ordinance in. I kind of put that together at the end before I left, and I'm glad he got that on, and I think that's going to really help that business, and I think we're, that was a good move. And just so that, for new council, I review agreements, and I looked at everything as well before you guys get to them, so if I have a question, I'll let Forrest know, I don't, there's a problem here, or let's change this, or whatever. So, I did, you know, review those agreements and actually helped work on the IGA with the sheriff. But anyway, and just for new council, this downtown Colorado grant, I think is going to really be good. I also represent center, and center's got that, got that same grant, and they're going to be, I think they're going to be kind of on stage for all that's been going on down there. This grant helps assess buildings and businesses, and what can go into the town, what makes sense, what do you do to improve the buildings? I mean, it really is a, I got to go to one of the sessions they had, and it's amazing the expertise that they have, that they bring down in all areas, whether it's financing, they bring bankers down, they bring people that can help finance the buildings, help, you know, work with the businesses, what do you do with the buildings? I mean, it's, I think it's really going to be helpful. Even though Monty is doing very well, I think, from getting buildings filled up, it never hurts to, let's push for the whatever's left that's empty. Let's try and get them done, and it's great to have a new business in town. Also did some reviewing of some deed restrictions with urban renewal. State kind of wants you to have restrictions on the properties whenever you sell them because they're generally going at some kind of a discount, and so, working with him on that, and I think Forrest put a lot of good thought in those revisions and restrictions, and I looked at them, and I thought they were great. So, soon as I got back, we had a very busy day at court, and interestingly enough, we had all the tickets and all the people that came there. We got them all resolved. Everybody pled to something, and we got the cases resolved. What I'm trying to do is, if folks come in the first time to appear, and they want to plead not guilty or discuss some kind of a plea negotiation, they generally have to come back another day. And so, you know, if it's a minor offense, somebody may want to get it done, but they're not quite ready to plead to the exact charge. And so what I've been trying to do is getting a pre-trial done right that day so that people don't have to come back another day, lose another day of work. And, and it makes the courts run a little bit more efficient when you can have 50 people show up and you get 48 of them done. The thing moves good, people get fines in place, whatever. And so, I think it's a fairly well-oiled machine in a, in a way. I think it's running very well. You know, and I gotta say to the chief, the officers are writing good reports, so that makes my job pretty easy. And if they don't have information, they follow up with additional reports, which, which is kind of nice because if I'm trying to work some resolution, and I've got a good report, and I can tell the guy, look, or the gal, look, we got you dead in the water now, let's figure out what we want to do here. As opposed to if it's a poorly written citation, or the report is incomplete or inaccurate, you know, then people are generally inclined to set it for a trial, and then that's more time for everybody. And so, you know, I think I'm very happy with the reports the officers are doing, and, and that makes up, makes my job pretty easy. So, and, and the clerk, and the judge, everybody is, you know, Nita, she makes the job very easy for me too, so thanks, Nita, really. I mean, we got a good team, and people know their job, and they get the job done. And as I say, when you can get 50 people show up and you get them resolved in one day, now people aren't losing more time, more work, and it just makes the process go a lot more efficient. We did have a couple people just, I know everybody is interested, and I think on this lead program, how it's doing. We had a couple of students that, that went through it and came back with very good report of how the lead program went, and they were impressed with the program. And unfortunately, I think we're gonna see a lot more folks go through the lead program. I mean, with the marijuana, it's prevalent, young people are using it, and I'm sure we're gonna get a lot more people running through the program. But after they go through that program, they've got their eyes open, and it's, it's, it's a real good education for them. So we're gonna push them through it. If we, if they come through the courts, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna run them through that program. I think it's, it's good. So really, other than that, I don't have too much, too much more. I think things are running pretty well, best I can tell, and, and a, and a good team with all the department folks and stuff. It's, you guys have a good team in place. So, any, any questions from anybody?
I do not, thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you.
Thank the PD for that. John, thank you for leadership. Keith, good job, guys. Nita?
Good evening again, council. So the first thing in your packet, you can see we got our crane. Sarah Copley completed our crane. She actually created it to represent bird watchers. So it's the birds watching all of us. So you can see it's got the binoculars and their sun hat. And that's a really great thing that's happening within our community is the cranes going up. And as my understanding, they do start going up tomorrow, so, so that's a great thing to have. So 2019 has been a fun and exciting year. I'd like to tell Jenny thank you because two years ago, I think the city was headed down a really bad path. And I'm not sure how many of us would have stayed. So thank you, Jenny, for helping us and Forrest and all of us. Getting together and working as a team makes it a lot better place to work when you have a team that you can call a family. Thank you. So with that being said, 2019, we started the charter review and the annex review committees. Unfortunately, we had to put those on hold because it was an election year. And with the election, my department gets extremely busy. There's a lot that happens behind the scenes for election. So we put that on hold. We are gonna start that up again this year, and hopefully we'll be able to get that completed. So next year, if we have any changes to the charter, we can get that out to the voters and then work on our three-mile plan, which is the annexation plan. We also approved chickens to be allowed within the city limits. The one cent tax passed, so congratulations on that. We also passed an ordinance, which unbeknownst to us, it passed before we actually got it, but the tobacco buying age from 18 to 21, it did take effect federally on January 1st, but we had also had passed that ordinance to change that age, which was a big asset to the youth in our community. Other big changes is we have two new counselors this year. Larry Foster, who ran unopposed, and then Martha Locke, who was seated on January 16. So those are big, big changes, and I think we're moving in the right direction, so thank you all for that. James Stewart is the deputy clerk. He's hosting tonight. So he started in October. He's picked up very quickly on the day-to-day processes. For his goals this year, I'm gonna be sending him to some beginner classes. And then I'm also gonna be sending him to some record retention and CORA classes, which is the open records. The goal I want him to achieve this year for the department and for the city, I want him to become our records guru. We have a room in the back that's full of records that date back to 1987, and there's actually a box back there that's dated 1983. So a lot of those can actually be destroyed. At, to this point, there hasn't been anybody besides myself and the department to really get into that, and with everything else, it's kind of hard. So hoping that James will take it on very quickly, and I think he will. I think he's a great asset to the city, and I really appreciate him being here and standing strong with us. Jenny had started, told you that the oversight committee will be starting that up in March. And I have already received six letters for interest in that oversight committee, so we'll get that going and start moving forward with that. Something I want to start new this year, in your packet, you can see a notice of upcoming events. It's an event calendar. This is gonna be posted on our website, Facebook, and the public posting place, which is the front door, City Hall. That way, the citizens are aware of any and all meetings that city council may attend throughout the month. So I'll sit down each month, beginning of each month with Forrest, and we'll go over different meetings that you all would be attending for that month. There may be others that outside entities put on, and we don't necessarily have to put those on the event calendar. But it's nice if we have an event calendar in advance notice for the citizens so they know what's taking place within our community. So I want to thank IT for getting our new webpage up and running. I do manage the webpage. So one of the things for the city clerk's page, we're going to implement a new site for city ordinances and resolutions so that the community members can look at those too. This will aid in our transparency as well. So if there's questions about, for example, the ordinance 901 that you passed this evening, folks can look that up on the webpage and read about it and see exactly what was said in that ordinance. Because when we publish an ordinance, we don't publish the entire thing. It's published by name only, and that's the only requirement that we have to meet, is to publish it by name. So this way, it will aid in the transparency, and the citizens can see exactly what was said in each ordinance or resolution. Business license, they are pretty much done for the year. The last count I took, we have 188 businesses that are actually within the city. That's home-based businesses, that's commercial businesses, that's computer businesses, that's any type of business that they would need a business license for that's within the city limits. We have about 400 altogether that includes outside city. So you've got Walmart, Amazon, your big box stores that do a lot of the internet-based businesses. They also hold a business license within the city of Montevista. So a couple of things with our business license, and I would like for council to think about this. And within the next month, two months, I will bring it forward to you. With summer coming, the city clerk's office has gotten a lot of calls and visits with people regarding mobile food trucks. We currently don't have any regulations for mobile food trucks. I have drafted some regulations that I would bring forward to you in the future if that's what you choose for me to do. Right now, the way that the food trucks are doing is that they talk to the property owner and get permission to put their food truck on their property. I don't know if you've seen a couple times over by Rain Brew's on 160, right there on the side. She has asked them to come in, and they set up right there on the street. We don't have a regulation to allow it, to not allow it, or anything of that nature. And right now, we've allowed it until we see that there may be an issue with traffic, other businesses within the area. So that's something I'd like for council to think about. Is that something we want to address? Do you think we need to address it? Do you think it's going just fine the way it is? Do we want to put more into that? Next big events in our community, we just had the Rocky Mountain Ag Fest, which my understanding was absolutely amazing. Coming up in March, you have the Crane Fest, March 6th through the 8th. And then in April, 17th through 18th is the Home and Garden Show. I feel that, you know, the Crane Fest is a big festival that comes to Montevista. It's been here a long time. Home and Garden Show, it's the second year. So we'd really like for supporters to get out and support not just the Crane Fest, but the Home and Garden Show as well. It's, I think it's a big thing for the city, and I think that a lot of citizens in the city and outside the city would benefit to go to those. Liquor license, we haven't had but the one new liquor license in 2019, which was Rain Brew's. And they've made a big impact on the city, so we'd like to thank them for that. Ran across something else that I'd like for council to think about and see if you would like for us to pursue moving forward with some regulations. But Jaime and I have been working on putting some information on the Sky High rental packet. We ran into a situation where there was a rental of Sky High, and they wanted to have alcohol. It was a wedding reception. And right now, it's not allowed unless you have a special event permit. Special event permits aren't issued except for to nonprofit organizations. And the state law actually says that if it is a private event, they can actually have alcohol. We don't address that in any of our regulations at all. So Jaime and I have sat down and we talked about it. We did add to the application where there's a box that says, do you plan on having alcohol? If so, you must visit with the city clerk. So we're trying to make steps forward between us so we know exactly what's going on, and we know how to deal with it when they come up. So that's something else, you know, I've prepared. If council would like to see that, if not, if you think it's working fine the way it is, then we can just move forward with Jaime and I working on a policy with the rental part of it. The municipal courts, we are, it's, it's amazing how smoothly it's ran. Between Judge Zollers and Mike and the police department, everybody clicks now. It's just, we're busy, we're very busy. But like Mr. Trillo said, it's, the way the police reports are written allows for both Mr. Trillo and the judge to make those decisions quick and easy. The judge promotes a lot of useful public service in lieu of fines. She doesn't require it, she asks them if they would like to do it in lieu of fines. We do have a lot of people that do useful public service with our nonprofit organizations around town. One of the big ones here just recently, there was a defendant that chose to do 24 hours of useful public service in lieu of fines. And he did his useful public service with Kids Connection. And the report I got back from Anika was, he went in there, he reorganized for them, he painted walls that haven't been painted in a year or so that needed it. He cleaned mats, he did things to help the Kids Connection and to help our community. So he did wrong, but he did right in the same breath. And that's huge. People don't, they're not afraid to come to court. They, they commit something that's bad, they come to court, and they know that they're gonna get a fair and justice deal out of it. And it's, it's worked really well. The courts proceeded to have 1,168 cases in 2019. This includes parking ticket, parking tickets, traffic violations, and code criminal violations. For 2019, the courts collected $97,762 in fines, $24,945 in PD surcharges, and $2,356.21 was collected for restitution and returned to the affected businesses by the individuals. So in return of a defendant committing a crime, if they've committed a crime where there's restitution that needs to be returned, the judge is requiring them to pay that restitution, and we return that money to those businesses that were stolen from or was damaged in any way. I also act as your PIO officer, which is your public information officer. I take care of the city webpage, I take care of the city Facebook page. This last year, it was mainly the transfer from the old webpage to the new webpage. The new webpage is through the state of Colorado, and it's, it's wonderful to work with. So it's easy to update, and it's easy to keep track of everything that's going on. The Facebook page, last year, we didn't, didn't do a whole lot with it. We basically did updates from the PD, updates from REC. This year, we've gotten a lot, I feel like we're putting more out there. I'm also gonna be taking some classes for PIO. I do have all my federal mandated classes to be a PIO officer, and I'm gonna... And I'm gonna refresh those classes because they've come out with a lot of different avenues of ways to deal with Facebook and different social media. I also make sure that all of our publications get to the papers, anything that we need to the papers and to the radios for public announcements. The Planning and Zoning Department, Forrest is the main contact for the planning department, but I assist him with the reports and the meetings. This last year, the Planning and Zoning heard six special review use applications and five were recommended for approval and moved forward to city council. One of those recommendations were the approval of the CAT shelter. Planning and zoning also is working on and continuing to work on a short-term rental ordinance. The Planning and Zoning Commission in two thousand nineteen also was, represents our Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment acted on two variance cases and approved them. In two thousand twenty, the Planning and Zoning Commission will be still working on that short-term rental ordinance. They'll also be reviewing a RV park. So two thousand twenty has kicked off to be a pretty busy year for so far with planning and zoning and growth. One of the other cases that's coming forward for planning and zoning is a minor subdivision. So those are things that are trickling down that will come to you eventually. So this year is a pretty exciting year for myself as well. In July, I will be graduating from the Clerks Association with my Certified Clerk Certificate. So I'll be attending that conference again this year. Also be attending the conference in October, which is our national conference with ICCMA. And at that point, I will have my full certification for the clerk's certificate. So there's a lot of training and a lot of planning for this year. Just wanted to leave you with this, the future depends on what we do in the present. So keep that in mind. And team is always together. Everyone achieves more. And then in two thousand nineteen, the saying was, "It is what it is." The one last thing is, in your packet, you will notice there's also a conference, the CML Annual Conference. I included the registration information in your packet along with a scholarship application. Scholarship applications. They were due February nineteenth, but Kevin told, Kevin Bommer with CML said, "If we get them in by the end of February, they will still consider a scholarship application." That scholarship application can pay for the, your registration fees for the CML conference. I do need to know if any of you would like to attend the CML conference as soon as possible. I need to get membership dues, or registration fees, excuse me, in before May fifteenth. And if it's after May fifteenth, then the registration fees go up. Any questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nita. Lots of information. Jaime? Department? You don't have a presentation like Jenny's here.
You know, every time, I'm a competitive guy, not in the wrong way, but I was like, okay, I'm gonna beat these guys. I wanna make it better. And then she comes with that. Like put a nice graphic report. I'm like, yeah, I got it this time. And I see these, like. But it's a good thing about having, you know, good coworkers, cause they challenge you and they push you. And so it keeps you on your toes. Well, first of all, I just want to apologize for the last mistake on the application. Like I say, you know, it's good to have good coworkers that challenge you. That should come to my attention as soon as it came through and I missed you. I failed to get that. In your, in your package, you should have the report, copy my report. And I started with the introduction of my team. In the Recreation Department, we have, it's a team of three. It's myself and then it's Antonio Martinez, which is the Recreation Assistant, and Kimberly Vialpando, which is another Recreation Assistant. And like, without these guys, I mean, they've been here longer than I have and they know the ins and outs more than I do. And I have learned from them and we have learned together. And I can't, a lot of my, a lot of stuff that is taken care of, if it wasn't for them, they spend a lot of time, they manage the time correctly. There's, you know, there's a lot of things that we need to shape in still in our department, but I think we get, we're heading to the right direction. And I can't, you know, the way they work and the way that they do things, they're passionate for what they do with the kids. And that's, that's great. And so I couldn't have done a lot of things without these guys. Division, our, the mission statement in our department, it is that "We strive to develop our, and create leadership, leadership opportunities to grow by providing and affording recreational programs and facilities to the youth and adults while seeking to be inclusive and adaptable to the needs of our community." And within that, our mission statement is to provide a high-quality and affordable and diverse recreational opportunities for the residents of Montevista and not only in Montevista, but the San Luis Valley. And to enhance the life in our community through individuals and family services, community programs, and the partnership with other organizations. We are looking ahead for this coming year. And one thing that we're looking, I can't wait for is the new facility. And this is just like, it's right there. We're just grabbing at it. And with that, you know, there's gonna be way more opportunities for this community. And, and like it says, like it says here, you know, we, we're looking for a place to provide, a facility to provide our, our youth. And I think that's gonna provide that for our kids. The next topic is people, okay? During, under people, we have volunteers and we have participants. Our volunteers, you know, I always compose with parents, family members, and citizens of our community. And I think they have an understanding that their time that they put with these kids is great, but I don't think they really grasp on how much impact they make in these kids. Just spending the time with them, going to practices, taking them to games, it makes a great impact in these kids. And as these kids grow, they will remember those. They will remember those things, they'll remember those memories. And it is great to have a community, parents that get involved and volunteer their time with this. During the, our fiscal year two thousand nineteen, we had a total of about a hundred and five volunteers that volunteer our, in our programs. And we had, within those volunteers, about five hundred hours that they volunteer total, if not more. We also have our participants, which includes our kids, coaches, you know. In two thousand nineteen, we averaged about five hundred and thirty kids participating in our programs. That's including some of the kids that come from other communities to participate in our programs. And about a thousand parents that attend in our programs, you know, and, and some of the events. So it is, it is well-attended events with our kids. It is the future of our community. And I think the efforts that people put out there for them, it is awesome. One, another subject that I have here is the community service. We have a lot of, like Anita mentioned, we have a lot of people that go through the community service and we, we use them. One thing that I need to work with and something I need to talk to Anita is to know what the offense of why they're there is so that we know, so I know where to place them. Just because we're working with kids, of course, when, you know, we don't wanna put just somebody that has something to do with kids and then put it with kids. So that's something that we'll probably have to work together and I'll communicate with her a little more about when they come. Okay, so what's the offense, a way to put them, working with kids or put them, working at the Sky High or the ground fair? Next topic is our REC programs. Within our REC programs, we have the youth and we have the adult programs. We also have our community programs. And the youth programs, we offer baseball, basketball, softball. We offer soccer, football, volleyball, and cheerleading. And you can see a little, some pictures there of the kids. Sorry, I don't have graphics here so you guys can see them. But that's, right now at this point, we're limited to what we can offer. I know there's a lot more that we wanna bring to this community and that we can offer. But because of spaces and stuff, we're limited to, to what we can offer. And we're working on that. As far as adult programs, we, at this point, we're offering adult basketball, adult volleyball, and adult softball. And, and average, and that goes from age fifteen and up. So I'm getting up there. I'm still participating in these programs too. But our, our youth goes from pre-K to seventh grade. And then our adults, we allow fifteen with the, of course, parent signature, saying that is okay. Up to, you know, forty-five, fifty, any age available. In our community programs, during two thousand nineteen, we offered the five K Fun Walk and Run Event. We also have the Family Fun Skate Night and the Ice Skating. We have the Denver Nuggets Skill Challenge, the Colorado Rockets Challenge, and the Nerf Warrior Showdown. And like I mentioned in our statement, you know, we, we work, we do our best to partner up with other entities, other communities to make this happen. And within our youth programs, although we have our own registrations and our own teams here, we also have to compete with Sargent, we play with Center, we play with Sawatch, we play with Sangre, Delnor, Creed. So within all these communities, we form our league. And of course, you know, everybody has rules. All the directors have to come together, create the rules of how we're gonna run this so that everybody can say, follow this set of rules. And so it's more, it's more intel than, you know, what it just, oh, you just go play and, you know. It takes collaboration in every community around and it's been working great. We also partner up with RGGP, which is Rio Grande Prevention Partners. And this is an active community coalition whose member include, includes community leaders, organizations, schools, volunteers, healthcare professionals, law enforcement, and youth from the Rio Grande County and Colorado. We're dedicated to help families avoid the life-altering consequences of underage alcohol consumption and drugs use in our two counties. So with, working with them, like I always say, as a, as a head department of the recreation, I don't wanna focus just on the recreation part, but also what we can do to help these kids. And I think this program fits perfect with, with what we're doing. And I am happy to, to work with them and they're working with us. So within the RGGP or the Rio Grande County Partner Preventions, we have the, what we call the CTC. And that stands for Communities That Care. And, and that program, that is a, so I'm just gonna read it here. Communities That Care is a community-based prevention model that was evaluated across the country with significant results, including preventing youth substance, youth initiation, and youth crime and violence. This model helps local communities assess the specific risks and protective factors among the youth in their communities. So again, this program kinda helps us to create new programs, how to get these kids involved, how to get them out of the streets, and how to get them away from drugs and alcohol. And it's, it's great. Our other partner is Montevista Schools. As you know, we use their facilities for our programs since we don't have our own facilities. And this two thousand nineteen has been a lot better than it has been when I started here. There, the, as you have heard it before, a new superintendent is willing to work with these kids. He understands that these kids is fitting the purpose of getting ready for the high school, middle school level. And so he works with us a lot and I am happy with, with the new change that happened there. The next topic is sponsors. As far as sponsors, I think you all noticed the digital marquee that we put at the Sky High. And that was with collaboration with the businesses around the community. And I just wanted to name them here because, you know, again, like everybody had mentioned, it takes the whole community, it takes a group to make things happen. One person can't do it, one organization can't do it. And so I just wanna thank Absolute Shine, Southern Rocky Mount Agriculture Conference, Calgary Baptist Church, Montevista Crane Festival, Prince of the SLB Refuge, Matthias Concrete, Montevista Chambers of Commerce, Montevista Kiwanis, SLB Sky High Stampede, and Montevista Aurora. I also wanna again thank the Rio Grande Prevention Partners for helping with, cause we purchased a new scoreboard for our softball fields. We haven't had a, haven't had a working scoreboard out there for about five years. So we finally got a new one. So we just need to set it up and get it running this year. Next topic is the financial summary. Within the recreations, we receive about eight percent of the total general fund expenditures. And out of this, it breaks into the recreation and the Sky High. The recreation gets about ninety-nine thousand and the Sky High gets about one sixty-five. And then from there, you know, it breaks out to where the positions and, and how to keep our, our programs going. And we try our best to do what we can with what we have. And I think my group, the guys that I have working under in my department, they are doing a great job on maintaining things with budget. And I can't be more grateful for that. Our accomplishments for two thousand nineteen. The numbers of registered youth in our programs increased about five percent in total from two thousand eighteen and about six percent since two thousand seventeen. Our expenditures with, within our department compared to our revenues and registrations went down by twenty percent since two thousand eighteen and about forty-five percent since two thousand seventeen. When I started here, I, first thing I noticed is that the expenditures were going way high to what the department was bringing in. And of course, we all know, like Jenny says, we can't do that, you know. And so with some of the experience that I had past, we tried to cut those things. Okay, how are we gonna work on getting, you know, spending less and bringing a little more? So there were some changes that we had to do. We're still working on it last year. We're still working on it this year. And with the help of Jenny and them, you know, with the experience that she has, we sit down and like, this is how we, we can get this and we're getting there. Like I said, we, we purchased a new scoreboard. We purchased portable fencing for their kids during their baseball games. Now they don't have to run the whole field. I mean, it is good for them to run, but when, when we get a good kid and he's all the way to the fence and these kids are running, he gets easy, easy basing. So now with the fence, they get more excited when they hit it over the fence cause it's a homerun and they feel that, oh, I can do this, you know. Little things like that is what pushes them to go and try it again. And so that was a good thing that we, we did there. And it's going great. We have seen changes in our adult programs since I started working here too. In two thousand seventeen, we had, in our basketball In 2017, we had, in our basketball programs, we had eight teams for the men's league and six on the women's league. The following year, in 2018, we had about a little increase of 10 teams, well, two teams, cuz we had 10 teams on the men's and then nine on the women's. So, we had about, I don't know, two more on the men's team and three more on the women's. And then last year, we had 13 teams for men's. And we had to turn down two teams, cuz we had no room or space for, to play. And our women's kinda increased, but it's understandable. Women have more responsibility than men. Women get out of work, they have to go make dinner, take care of the family. Men is like, I'm going to play, we'll see you in the bed. So, I can see where that could happen. On our volleyball teams, we also, we do a coed volleyball team. And it's been consistent with five teams, six teams. So, we, we're trying to find ways to add increase that and, and get it more advertised, probably. All right, on the Sky High part, again, I can't wait for the new complex to come in. It's around the corner. But, when I started working here too, we also had some vandalism in the, in the facility. First thing that we did is had to secure some of those entries where people were getting into. And just last year, we, we put a new video surveillance, surveillance system there, which kinda helped minimize the vandalism. We were, every time that we had an event there, there was a couple thing, things that kinda disappear, chairs, tables, and we couldn't, you know, see where it went, or who took them, or... The other thing that we did is we changed the doors to a key, from a key to a code. So, anybody that had kids back then, they can't use them no more if they don't have the code. So, that kinda minimized that too. Our 2020 department goals for, for this year is that we will continue to strive to provide quality services for our citizens while at the same time meeting the demands for better facility space. As part of this need, the Recreation Department, along with other partners and the community support, are working hard and looking forward to the construction of the new multipurpose. I don't know how many times I can repeat this, 'cause I'm so excited about this. The Recreation Department is constantly, continuously looking for the most financial, financially efficient mechanism to provide our various types of services while maintaining the highest quality standards. We will continue to look for a way to provide in-house training that is relevant to our responsibilities. As part of our strategy plan, we specifically encourage staff to utilize relevant professional services like National Recreation Park Surveillance. So, these programs right here is where they can, our Tony and Kim can go and get free training, you know, that can help them be better at what they're doing. We also have SERSA, and what is the other one for us? That one, there is just... The other program that... Yes. And so, we look in those programs to see what kinda trends we can take so that we can, we can help ourselves and do better what we do. We also pursue opportunities to expand our services to the special needs population and seniors living in Montevista. Our department will pursue partnership, partnership with other entities to volunteer organizations looking for ways to expand this direction. I know it has come in the past to where people had asked if we had offered any kind of services for handicap, special needs. And we don't have anything like that. One, we don't have the facility for it. And I think it's a little more complex thing, but I am looking forward, I'm looking into it. And hopefully, in the near future, we can integrate that into our programs to bring that up. A couple of programs that we're looking into and trying to implement into our, our programs, special events, projects, is like the, one, one that came up is the Daddy, Daddy and Daughter Dance, the monthly youth activities with sponsors, which we're gonna talk to a couple businesses to see if they wanna sponsor, you know, once a month, sponsor an activity. So, we can take the kids up to the park, or take them to the Sky High and do something that they wanna do. Another one is the Color Family Fun Run, the Family Fun Skate Night. We are having a breakthrough basketball camp here in April, I think. We are integrating a cornhole tournament, Special Olympics, I would like to have that. Still working on the community dog park, and I wanna bring a mud volleyball tournament. I think that's gonna be fun. All right, to end my report, you know, I, I, I'm happy to be part of this team, like Nita and other mentioned. This past year, 2019, has been a lot better than a couple of years back. You feel more comfortable coming to work and knowing that the people that you're working with has the same vision and, and has the same strive to get, you know, this community better. And, and, and you can't ask for anything else. So, I am so proud to and fortunate to have a dedicated council community, the staff that believes in the enrichment and positive power of recreation programs for the entire community. And we had a tremendous year, and I'm looking forward for another one. And we'll see, we'll keep striving, keep wanting and going for it. That's, that's my motto. So, I don't know, that's it for my report, and if you guys have any more questions?
Hi, me, that was a good report, thank you.
Thank you.
And mud volleyball is a hit.
I know, I know, I can't wait for it too.
All right, Council Committee, City Commission, and Council reports. Ma'am, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Not one thing. Believe it or not.
Gary?
Maybe two very short things, it's been a long day, a long night. Was, just wanna encourage folks about some of the events specifically put on by the PD, Neighborhood Watch, and Coffee with the Cop, and those of those ones, and turns up with the counselor, Lock. And they have, have grown into some, some very informative and very worthwhile gatherings. Neighborhood Watch was a little sparsely attended, but the program was total. The, the program was very informative and well-planned and well-done. So, just wanna encourage that, Coffee with the Cop first Wednesday, every month, and Neighborhood Watch third Monday of every month. So, for those of you out there listening, I don't know, might die, who knows? They can read my works, but whatever, so, that's all.
Okay. I wanna go to Neighborhood Watch, as well as Coffee with the Cop. That was a big program that really came to life. When John got here, I know it was something that was going on, and I have not attended. My bad. But, a lot of the community has not attended. And we hear from the community on their opinions on a lot of stuff. And this city has worked hard to get to where it's at. The Police Department has worked hard to get to where it's at. And I'm a huge supporter of the Police Department for what they do. And I will shame the community into the fact that you can come in here and say the things that you want, or Facebook what you want, but get involved. And Neighborhood Watch has been really good for this community, because it stopped a lot of stuff from happening. And now, it's like, all of a sudden, everybody's disappearing. I know it's been winter, it's been cold, yada, yada, okay? Support this community, support the PD, support the city of Montevista. And I appreciate the input from the community, but I'll call you out on it. Step it up, community. Like I told Forrest just a little bit ago, we don't have no more stumbling blocks, we have stepping stones. And if we want this community to keep going, then just, just get involved. And not on Facebook either. Get involved with the community. So, with that, that's all I have. I will thank everybody for what they've done in all the departments. And somebody must move us to go to executive session.
You have the script for that?
No, I got the file, the script, somebody's got a question, we'll go into the executive session.
Well, I would, we, we suggest to executive setting.
I second that.
There's no need for discussion, James?
Johnson, Counselor Johnson? Johnson, Johnson? Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'm, read this here, Nita. Okay. Executive session motion, we moved going to executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to the...